We're live. Hey, everybody. Juan Perez here. Organizing Monster. I almost forgot my handle, Chris.
Yeah, well, you just changed your handle, Juan. I'm Chris Lopez, your union brother on TikTok, Instagram, Twitter. Um, anyway, how are you feeling today, Juan?
Good, good. You've seen what's been going on, all these labor actions, strikes across the country, across the world.
Well, there's been a few.
There's been a few this week. The Starbucks went on strike.
You know, Starbucks is, you know, you know, I know we said last time Gen Z. There you go. Gen Z is the most pro-union generation in US history.
What's a Gen Z, Chris?
Gen Z is anyone born after nineteen ninety-six. I'm pretty sure. I looked that up like a couple of days ago.
Nice. I believe you.
But, uh, no, it's really cool and they're leading the labor movement right now and they're, they're going like a train all around the country.
Nice. And we also had the, the teachers in LA.
Yeah, the teachers.
With SEIU in LA. There's over forty thousand people in the streets this week, three-day strike.
I saw the, the, some of the, the videos of, just looked like a sea of red.
Red and purple.
It was just purple and all, all the colors. It was really, really cool.
Yeah? And what else went on strike, Chris?
Oh.
Wait, 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 not that one. France.
Oh, France.
France. France is on strike.
I got a little anxious.
There's like millions of people right now in France, striking because Macron is trying to raise the retirement age by two years.
And I think that's kind of indicative of the way things are in France. They don't take any shit in France.
France don't take no shit.
And I think the US could learn a lot, at least the labor movement about.
And we are. Look, we just talked about UTLA and Starbucks and, and what's other strikes?
Okay, so there was a strike in Imperial Valley.
Who?
Unfair labor practice, UFCW Local 135, and they did the first strike in their history during a contract. It was for unfair labor practice. And, um, it was about, it lasted thirteen days and, and we won. You know, it was great. A hundred and ten people got to split about, we're thinking about one point two million people. One point two million dollars.
That's a lot of people.
That's a lot of people.
That's awesome. Yeah, yeah. So these, so strikes are going all over the place.
Yeah, strikes.
And we're winning.
We are winning.
We are winning because we're winners.
We're winners.
Yeah. Speaking of winners.
Yeah.
Who do we got here today, Chris?
Well, we have a special guest, Jose Rodriguez, Councilman in National City. And, uh, you know, but before we get started, I have a question for you. What do you think about term limits?
Generally, a good idea.
Generally, a good idea? You're for term limits?
I am for term limits. I mean, I supported a proposition in National City back in twenty eighteen to provide term limits for both mayor and council.
That's right.
In our city.
Awesome. Well, now, listen, my, my wife said that she's the big boss and there are no term limits. So, so.
The rules at home may be different than the rules.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Hey, you know, it could be an unfair labor practice. You never know.
A strike? Somebody's going on strike at your house?
No, I don't do that. I guess, you know, I just got back from one. I'm still amped up.
Well, we are drinking Monster because we're sponsored.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but also Jose, like, yeah, just give us a quick, um, what your position is, where you came from, a little backstory for some people that might not know who you are. Although I think everybody probably already knows who you are.
Well, I really appreciate the opportunity of coming here. Thank you for the invitation. It's an honor. Am I the first elected official to come?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you are. Congratulations.
This is an honor. Thank you.
We'll put some sparks in the TikTok.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, thank you, guys. It, it really means a lot. Um, I'm an elected official from National City as a city council member, but I started my career in labor. I started as a, um, a student organizer at AFT Local nineteen thirty-one, back when I was going to school at City College. And then I worked at the Labor Council for six years on and off before running for council in National City and eventually getting through. So, I mean, my platform is pretty basic. I mean, I support working families. I want to make sure people earn a decent wage or treated with dignity and respect. Are able to have a good quality of life. Um, so the job is incredibly important for that. But also there's, you know, issues in the neighborhood and need to be addressed. I mean, the rising cost of housing and us building only luxury houses is a big problem uh, in the region, but in National City in particular, we need to build more homeownership opportunities, which is incredibly important and something we have not prioritized. And then basic neighborhood needs, neighborhood infrastructure, uh, more open spaces, more parks, right? Having a good, high quality of life.
Definitely. All right, let's get to it. What happened?
What happened?
What happened with the mayor race? Everybody wants to know.
Yeah, well, the results were clear, right? I mean, um.
It was tight.
It was a very tight race. So I ran for mayor last election cycle, uh, fell short by, you know, less than seventy votes. Ex-mayor, now mayor Ron Morrison ended up winning. The incumbent mayor at the time, Alejandra Sotelo Solis, you know, came in a distant third. Um, so it was a very contentious, very difficult, uh, but also very fun race. Um, a lot of the issues that I mentioned earlier were really brought up to the forefront when it came to the campaign. Um, and now are being implemented on the council. So the issues and the ideas that we continue to bring forward are gonna be the priority in National City, God willing, and with the majority of the council. But we, we are in a good spot, right? Um, but, but we had to go through that in order to prioritize the issues we find important for our community.
Right.
You know, you kind of talked about, you know, the unhoused and what's going on and, um, you know, it's just all around the, the county of San Diego, probably around the world. And, you know, people are one paycheck away from, from being homeless, if you think about it. There's, uh, you know, I think kind of like one, one of the reasons Juan and I started this podcast is we just want to talk about kitchen table economics. And I think that is like the, the main thing for the labor movement. I always say the main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing. Um, and you, you know, because I think sometimes, um, elected officials on both sides, they, you know, there's issues that are very controversial and people stop for, you know, can stop remembering about, you know, oh, I can't pay my bills, like, you know, I, I'm having trouble paying my rent, and then they start going off onto a different tangent. Maybe it's a social issue that divides people. But I think when, um, in organizing, you know, we don't ask people, you know, are you Republican, are you Democrat, are you independent? You know, everyone deserves a union. So that's, you know, what do you think?
Definitely, even strippers.
Yes, everyone deserves a union. Absolutely.
Putting it out there.
Absolutely.
Hey, they were organizing. Remember, oh, we went to the Labor Notes.
Yeah, Labor Notes.
Yeah, and, uh, and, and, and somebody on the panel was a stripper. And, um, obviously the, when they were organizing, the boss man retaliated. Now her and her friends, coworkers are buying, are in the process of buying that club.
That same club.
And they're gonna make a co-op out of it.
That is awesome.
That's crazy.
It is. That's pretty cool.
Workers are rising everywhere, whether you're a station, a grocery worker, sugar factory, or dancers.
And, you know, what's going on in France is, you know, people are marching the streets because they're raising the retirement age, just, you know, two years.
And, you know. They're talking about raising it here too, by the way.
Labor's making a stand right now and, uh, it's, it's sweeping the country and you see it with the strikes, the, the strike that I was involved with, uh, uh, in Sprinkle Sugar, you see it with the teachers, you see it with Starbucks. I mean, it's, it's hot.
But to bring it back, let's bring it back to Ale Jose. Everybody wants to know about Ale. What about people right now that say, thanks a lot, Jose, and now we have a Republican?
As mayor of National City?
Yeah.
Well, uh, National City is represented by five elected officials, right? A mayor and four council members. Uh, the four council members are Democrats. So we hold a super majority on the council. And as a result of that, we actually have regional representation overwhelmingly Democratic. So representation at Sandag, at MTS, at Water Boards, Democrats, 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 right? And I think good ideals moving forward. So, you know, it's, it's one thing to take that position, right? And, and say, you know, we split the vote and as a result, uh, we have a Republican in office, technically true. But the good ideals of our democratic values are still pushing forward, right?
Yeah.
That one individual doesn't have, um, a strong mayor form of government. So they do not control the purse strings of the city, nor appointments regionally. It's something that we all decide collectively. Um, so that's on one end. Like, we're still winning, right? Good union values, good democratic principles are still moving forward. Um, on the other end, we need to change the rules. Uh, the reason this happened is because National City does not have primaries.
That's right.
So City of San Diego, City of Chula Vista, they have a primary system where everybody gets to run. This is a democracy. Everybody should have an opportunity to run. If you feel your ideals are not being represented on the council, run. Um, in doing so, then, you know, however many people run, the top two vote-getters would then line up against each other um, and, and run in a, in a runoff, like, like it happens here in San Diego and in Chula Vista. That didn't happen in National City, right? So there was a delusion of the votes by having more than two individuals running and their results are what they are right now. But it's something that we need to change.
Let's change the rules.
Let's change the rules.
Do you need us to canvass or what?
I mean, we need a campaign. It's a campaign. We need people to vote, you know, and we need to spread the word.
Yeah, but I'm a, I'm, I'm a super fan of primaries anyways. Like, if you feel that, like, like you said, the person in, in office is not representing you for whatever reason, we claim this is a democracy, so everybody should run at that point. Let's take a, an even shot. Let's go for it. But then at the end of the day, I think you have to like lick your wounds kind of deal if you do lose and then just get up and, but I think in your, in your case, like you said, you get, your issues that you brought up during your campaign, they're getting pushed still, even that you lost. So in a way, you still won.
Well, you know, I'll say this, I believe we are in a much better position now. I mean, losing is never fun. Don't get me wrong.
Oh, trust me.
That sucks. But we're in a better position now than we were a year ago. And the reason is simple. We have a majority that is willing to work together to pass good legislation. Prioritize homeownership, prioritize respect and trust of our city workers and make sure that they are treated with dignity and respect. Um, making sure that we prioritize quality of life issues, all issues the majority of us care about. I can't, I can't say that about the majority of us last election cycle.
Oh, wow.
So, so it is a drastic change.
Yeah.
With this new council now.
Nice. Are you gonna run again?
Am I gonna run?
Are you gonna run again? Yeah. You gotta beat Ron Morrison.
Well, I'm up for reelection next year.
Yeah.
For my city council seat in District Two, and I suppose I'm making the announcement here. Yes, I'm running for reelection.
There you go. Union of Us Podcast.
Here first.
Ricardo, you got this? That's awesome.
We don't have primaries, so that means that I'll be up in November twenty twenty-four.
Nice.
I think that's really interesting, you know, primaries. Um, you know, I, I think there's this kind of grassroots movement sweeping the country and, uh, and I, I think labor is leading the way. People, you know, I think there's, in both parties, I think there's gatekeepers. And, um, you know, kind of, I gotta okay with this, but I, I just think, you know, labor is just, hey, you know, we're doing this. This is happening. And I think, uh, there's a lot more, um, uh, difficulty with the elected officials who want to get reelected or, or people want to run for office if they're, you know, they don't have a strong, um, you know, pro-union background. Because I, I think, uh, I know I always say seventy-one percent approval rating of, of labor unions in the United States. I mean, that's not just Democrats. That's Republicans. That's independents. People are coming together for, uh, you know, people are sick and tired of not being able to pay their rent, their bills, all of that.
And I just saw that SDGNE is gonna raise the rates again.
Wow. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Be good to keep an eye on, on, on that.
Yeah, I think it's getting ridiculous. Everything is skyrocketing. Everything. Rent, groceries, eggs, gas.
Yeah.
And so that's why me and Chris do what we do in labor.
Right.
Because we do believe, like you know here says, one job should be enough. And, but you came from labor.
Yeah.
And you got into the politics world. Do you think more people in labor should follow suit, run for office?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Everywhere. Um, it is incredibly important to have a core set of values before, I think, individuals serve in public office. Because their values will demonstrate in ways that sometimes are not measured by the public, but they have big differences within the organizations that you're serving in. So it is absolutely critical that we get people that have, I think, a labor background, that understand that it's important to provide, you know, rights and benefits to everyday workers in the public and private sector, but also like understanding the bigger picture. You all are talking about France, right? Um, I mean, working people coming together, uh, is the only counterbalance against big corporations, right? That have their agenda, as well as, you know, some more corporate, I think, part of the government. Um, some, some big government being pushed by corporations, right? Um, so the only counterweight to that are working people coming together. And when we have individuals that come from the labor movement that have that set of values, that transcends into whatever organization they serve in. So absolutely, more union people should be running for office. I mean, there's water boards, there's school boards, there's councils, there's all kinds of things people should run for. And, and, you know, with the backing of labor should win, and then those values will transcend the organizations that they serve in.
Do you think Chris should run?
I absolutely think Chris should run. I think we had a conversation about this a minute ago.
Yeah, but then we can't do this, Chris. Then we can't.
I mean, I think we all should run, to be honest.
But the thing is, is, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's fun to be in labor right now. I mean, with, uh, you know, it's exciting. We go to, I mean, just, I mean, it was hard. I mean, the strike was hard and, uh, you know, for Sprackles, it was long, I was tired. I'm still tired, still getting used to it, but they won. I mean, it's, it, to, 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 the, the company was gonna give them zero. I mean, they were, and, and now they're getting one point two million. Some people are getting the low end, five thousand. Some people are getting seventeen thousand, like Powerball. But, uh, it was the blood and sweat and the solidarity of the workers.
And your TikTok videos.
You know, and that's another thing. I kind of like.
Yeah.
Push, you know, you know, uh, you know, the labor movement, um, and you probably know what hashtags are, right?
Yeah.
You know.
Come on.
I'm just making sure. I'm just making sure.
He's younger than you.
And, oh, yeah. I was thinking about that. Can you talk? I am?
I don't know.
Anyway, we, we. We got Ricardo laughing back there. You don't see him on film, but we'll have him come out later. No, but I, you know, being on the picket line, you know, I, one of the things I told the members, it's not, they were getting paid seven hundred dollars a week. Um, there was money set aside to make sure that they, they continue to maintain their healthcare. And on the picket line, it's not the money or, you know, it's the mind. You know, because you're out there and you gotta make things fun and, and, you know, you gotta pass the time because you gotta be out there showing your presence. I mean, in short, you're walking around. We got like TikTok videos, getting people, you know, we had, we had Rocky, we had La Chona. Did you see La Chona?
Uh, I haven't seen it, but I'm gonna check it out now.
But that one, I mean, we, you know, getting people together and we had a lot of stuff and it kind of brings, um, um, you know, it passes the time, but it's solidarity.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was talking about hashtags because on Instagram, the hashtag labor movement has about, I think, seventeen thousand followers. But the hashtag labor movement on TikTok has twenty million followers.
Wow. Yeah, TikTok is out of control right now.
TikTok is where the cross-pollination of the labor movement is, and it's really interesting, um, that, uh, there are people that, that want to ban it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was, uh, really interesting. I'm not gonna throw out any names, but I think it, pretty much everyone knows, uh, who those people are. Um, but I think if, uh, you know, you got twenty million people, you got the labor movement, um, really taking control on TikTok. I mean, it is, it is awesome.
I mean, last, last podcast we had was, we had three people, three TikTokers, all in unions in different states, one in Canada. And they joined us on, on our, on our last episode and we talked about their issues, our issues, and what's going on, on in Canada. But that's what TikTok brought together though, brought us together. Without social media, we wouldn't have been able to been together. So we're gonna start having these like recurring monthly, uh, Zoom meetings with, with them or, and with other TikTokers. But these TikTokers have followers, they have views, thousands, more traction on their, on their videos than you do on Facebook or Instagram sometimes. Because people support labor, supporting labor on TikTok bigly, like that?
Yeah. And your handle, I mean, Organizing Monster.
Yeah.
You changed his handle, Your Union Brother. We had Your Union Sister on TikTok. We're gonna ask her to be a co-host on, on the next one and, but.
Spoiler.
Oh, yeah, spoiler.
Oh, we gotta cut that out.
Cut that out. Okay. She's gonna do it.
What's up with you, Jose? So what's going on? City Council, what have you guys been working on? You said you're gonna put, uh, for next ballot, you're working on getting primaries, right? You said?
Yeah, so, so we're trying to find a way to get primaries in National City. So, uh, we're gonna find out whether or not we could do it as a council right now, so we can have primaries for next election cycle and going forward.
Gotcha.
Or, uh, adopting what is called a charter city, so that we can set, um, a lot of our own local rules. And, um, one of them is, you know, having a primary, uh, voting system. So, so we're gonna find out which way to do it, but it's gonna either happen, you know, through legislation or it's gonna happen through the ballot box.
Would there, would there be anybody opposed to that?
Anybody that would not benefit from majority rule would be opposing that.
Start dropping names, Jose.
Well, I mean, you just look at the reelection results, right? And, and, you know, the individuals that win oftentimes are not representative of the majority of the residents. So, yeah, they probably won't like it, but the tenet of a, a tenant, basic tenet of a democracy is majority rule.
That's awesome.
And that's who should be in office, right?
Yeah.
That's why I, I, at home, I'm not in charge because I got my, my wife, my three daughters, and Clementine. I'm outnumbered.
All women.
That makes two of us, by the way. Four daughters, so no, I get outvoted every time.
You, you gotta try your best.
Keep trying. So we're working on that. That's important. You know, there's a couple things for housing, right? Housing is incredibly expensive. We are somehow, we have somehow been led to believe that it is a basic kind of economic driving point, that if we have more units available, as a result, the rents will go down. It's basic supply and demand. Somehow we believe that. I don't believe that's true. And the reason is, if we look at the productions of what we've seen in Ash, I can't speak for other cities, but in National City, last ten years, we've built, um, uh, about a thousand units in National City. Out of those thousand, take a guess at how many of them were for sale? Units that you and I and anybody else could buy?
Five.
Zero.
Close. Eighteen.
Whoa.
Eighteen out of a thousand, right? And out of those thousand, most of them have been luxury apartments, twenty-six hundred dollars and above. That trend is, um, uh, one where big corporate investors are coming in, building, you know, apartments. We have allowed upzoning. We have allowed, you know, very little parking requirements. And, um, there's very little affordability included within the construction. So most of them are just luxury apartments. And you go knock on doors and you talk to people and it's people just renting a room, right? Just kind of making ends meet. Um, but I think it is a backwards way for us to continue to develop. I mean, how can we continue to develop units that, you know, take up, you know, mo, most of an individual's income as rent?
What's the average one, one-bedroom apartment in National City?
I, I don't know about the average right now, but I know what is being built. So, so last week, we had an analysis on our housing numbers for this year, for the past year. And we have provided permits for three hundred plus units. Out of those, only five of them are likely for sale. The rest are units that are apartments. Out of those, right, three hundred or so units that are apartments, ninety percent of them are two thousand six hundred dollars and above. That's crazy. That's crazy. So, so one thing is making sure that we continue to, uh, protect tenants, make sure people are not displaced, right, and maintain rents affordable. The other thing is what kind of building, what kind of buildings are we actually allowing to be built within our cities? And, and why are we not discussing homeownership as part of that construction? Because over the long run, what happens is those corporations that have built those apartments are set for life. Good for them. They've made good investments. What about the people that live there? And what about the residents that can't afford to live there, right? They now are displaced, going into different parts of the region because they can't afford the rent that, that is there now. So we need to think about what we are allowing to be developed within our cities, not just for the sake of reaching high numbers for some basic supply and demand. We need ownership. And like, this isn't a far-fetched idea. I mean, in the fifty, sixty, seventies, homeownership was the, the, uh, the standard, right? It, you know, most parents that bought in that time, that was like the option. You, you, you just bought. And, uh, government programs were set up to allow, uh, developers to make units that were for sale. So you had a whole generation of people that bought, um, and then they kept the house, and then they passed it on to their kids. Or bought, kept their house, you know, did a cash-out refinance, started a business.
Yeah.
Cash-out refinance, buy another house, right? Continue to invest. But, but that wealth generating opportunity isn't there for this generation, right? We are being squeezed on multiple ends, squeezed by large employers that are not wanting us to have a decent quality of life because they're squeezing every profit they possibly can. And then also the housing market, which we as a government entities are not prioritizing, incentivizing long-term wealth for our community. We are incentivizing long-term wealth for people that already have wealth.
Exactly.
So that's, that's the difference in housing that I, and that's a conversation that has not been happening within housing circles that I think needs to happen.
Yeah. So, yeah, from what I understand, like BlackRock, Blackstone, these big old corporations are buying lots and houses and, and blocks, and then they're renting out or Airbnb or whatever. But if that's what it was in the fifty, sixties and seventies, homeownership was the norm, everybody owns a home kind of deal, that was a standard, white picket fence kind of deal, where, where did that go wrong? I don't, I don't, like, how did, now that became a business scheme? Is buying out, um, blocks and building, um, building apartments and making money out of it? Like Airbnb now, like that kind of stuff? Like, how, where did we go wrong?
Union density. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, right now, it's, it's, um, the union density back then, I think it was, uh, in the thirties.
Thirties.
Thirty percent union density. And now it's like, uh, depending on, it's in the teens. Depending on if it's public, public or, or private. So, um, not to mention having affordable housing for people to buy, but raising the standard of living for, you know, um, that's what, that's what labor unions do. That's what the labor movement does. It raises the standard of living so people can buy a house. You know, you can, you can build houses, but we need to make sure, like, you touched on where, um, and I'll, I'll say it again, there are companies that really don't want you to make a living wage. And, um, people are fighting. You got A, Amazon Labor Union, you got Starbucks United, you got everything going around the country. And the labor movement is hot. And, 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 and like I said, you know, we are in, in, in a time right now where we can make change with this momentum. The labor approval rating shouldn't be seventy-one percent. It should be eighty percent, should be ninety percent. You wanna solve the homeless problem, or the unhoused, I should say, um, form unions.
Yeah. I think, going back to the, the homeownership stuff, I think it's totally like a corporate thing, corporate America because there was articles written, like millennials don't need homes, like that kind of stuff, like don't even bother investing in a home kind of deal, like we should be, we're more nomads now, like we just move from place to place to place. They're, they're setting that up for us though, but they're making it like a cultural thing, that it's our decision, but it's not. It's like, these motherfuckers don't want us to own, because that's the number one way to build wealth for individuals. Like me, I'm lucky. I'm lucky that I got to buy my house from my, from my parents, like under market value, otherwise I wouldn't have been able to afford it. And now I have a house under my name, but most people are not gonna be able to buy a house, period. And I think you have to make a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to be able to afford the average house in San Diego.
Well, you, you know, here's the other thing, and to give kind of some developers the benefit of the doubt, um, after the two thousand eight housing crisis, it was very difficult to, um, receive loans in order to build units that are for sale. It's actually easier to get loans to build apartments because apartments are a sure long-term investment. Whereas units that are for sale, the market might fluctuate from one year to the next, right? So the financial aspect, I think, is difficult for some developers. And then in California, there is a construction, um, litigation. So, so if, if somebody builds condos, they can be sued up until ten years. So most of the, um, condo associations, uh, and condo developments and developers will save up money because they know a lawsuit is coming by the tenth year.
Oh, wow.
So it de-incentivizes the construction, like, why would a developer do that instead of just building apartments? Which they can sell to somebody else to buy and, and turn a profit, right? So, so that is not set up to build, uh, units that are for sale. Um, but also like we have been pushing mandates, right, for cities to build units, but we have not pushed mandates to build units for sale. We've just said build, right? And I think the result of that is just, you know, maximizing profit, building units that are twenty-six hundred dollars and above uh, for residents that can't make ends meet and just need to rent a room. And, and that's not, that's not, um, uh, you know, the lifestyle that we should have in, in the US, the wealthiest country in the world. I mean, we should have a higher standard of living and if one likes to live in that situation, that's great. But it, one should have the ability to purchase a condo or a townhouse, um, if you have a decent job, right?
Yeah.
And the point is that we have not built that, so we don't have that availability right now.
Gotcha. What's the union density in National City?
You know, National City actually has the highest union density in the county. So a lot of blue collar workers in National City.
I thought it was Chula Vista.
Oh.
Uh, no, we, we do have a friendly rivalry in South Bay. I wanna say that number's National City. I wanna say that number's National City. It is National City. So, yeah, a lot, a lot of union members, you know, live in National City, um. Uh, very much a middle-class neighborhood and middle-class community and with strong values and ideals, so.
Yeah, and I think that's what got you over the edge on the last election for city council, like you, you killed it, right? Like, two years ago, whatever. I did a commercial for him, but. We uplift each other.
I got the Juan bump.
Now you're getting the union or bust bump. How about that?
That's it.
And we're, we're just.
You're running for governor?
Governor, come on, bro.
Like, we're talking about these gatekeepers. I mean, it's like, you just go, go big or go home.
Didn't AOC was a bartender or something and then ran for Congress? Yeah, let's go to the casino.
Union casinos.
So funny. No, I, I think, um, I mean, we, we have a really good governor at the moment. I, I really like the job that he's doing and. I mean, I think generally our state legislature is pretty good. I mean, there's room for improvement all the time, but, um, we do have good union representation there. We need, you know, always strong advocates, but.
This, this week during the delegates, labor council delegates meeting, we had a, a high school. Come in and do a presentation, a high school student. Badass presentation on single payer, that there's a campaign across the state with the nurses, of course, CNA. Uh, California Nurses Association. And they're pushing Calcare again. It's gonna be up next week, next year. They're pushing it for next year. Um, universal healthcare. What do you think?
Uh, yeah, that, I mean, that should be a human right, right? I mean, you're sick, you should be able to go to the doctor and not be charging arm and leg. I mean, yes.
I'm way past, I mean, the, the healthcare for all. I mean, people are having trouble paying their rent. I mean, you know, no one should have to worry about. Going to the doctor. If you're, if, especially, you know, there's mental health or if, you know, physical health or whatever, it's. It, it, people should, should be able just to take care of themselves. They gotta work, they, they, they make honest, do honest, honest decent work. They should get some honest decent healthcare.
On the podcast, uh, last time when we had the Canadian on, she spoke about their healthcare. She sounded like, you guys are bickering over there with, you should have healthcare or not. We're past that. We already have it. They, so their, their fights are a little bit different, more, more access to more healthcare, they're fighting. But they all have healthcare. She said when she had a kid, a few years back, was it? She only had to pay twenty dollars out of pocket and she was in the hospital for four days. That's how it should be.
That, that's ideal.
It's like, why, you know, you got, it, it's like you got in-network, out-of-network. I mean, what if you're, you're, you know, you're visiting your, uh, your family in another state? And you're out of network and you come up with these, all these costs, it's, it's ridiculous and, uh, yeah, you know, Calcare, absolutely, Medicare for All, absolutely.
Yeah, there you go. Jose endorsing Medicare for All. Awesome. Well, Jose's a big Bernie bro.
Oh, yeah, that's cool.
Yes, I am a big Bernie bro. I was a big Bernie supporter, absolutely. You know, I, I remember, uh, Bernie running in twenty sixteen and he actually encouraged a lot of people to run. He said, you know, if you have an itch, go do it. Go run for school board, go run for council, go do whatever. And I thought it was such a far-fetched idea in my mind, cause I never considered running for, seriously considered running for office. And then after his campaign got traction and, you know, I was out there on events and rallies and it was really inspiring, even for me. To, to take a, take a shot and run for, you know, my local council seat. Uh, we fell short that time, but eventually got through, but. I mean, I think for me, he was an inspiration as well as for millions of people in, in America, so, and in the world, no.
You got the Juan bump.
Yeah, remember, I encouraged you to run. We were driving to the convention, right?
You're crazy, but, no, 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 we, we were having tacos.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
And, and I'd been, like, I'd been asked by people, hey, you should consider running again, you know? Losing sucks, but I mean, how are you gonna, you know, pick up and just run again and put your family through all that? And I was, in my mind, I was thinking, I'm not gonna do this again. This is, this is really hard. It's really difficult on us. And then I run into this guy. We're having tacos and the first thing he says is, hey, so you're gonna run or what?
You have to.
Just do it.
And then what happened?
And then, and then I ran.
And then you ran.
And then we won.
And then you won. So what do you say, like, her, losing sucks, it burns? Like last year I lost a campaign, so whether it's in politics or in union organizing, it hurts. I don't know, like what advice do you have to people, you know, when they lose? Get back up again?
I mean, not, nothing is permanent, right? Um, even, even running a campaign and being out so vocal in public, being on TV, right? And everybody on social media is discussing the race, um, and then you lose. Yeah, it doesn't feel great, but life goes on, you know, and if one has good core values that they wanna continue to push forward. Then one just, cause, I mean, one has to just keep going forward, right? So there's, there's that aspect. I think on a personal level, um, one has to, I learned to do this, just internalize my defeats. Fully accept them for what they are, have a, like, honest assessment about what went right, what went wrong. Um, and then, and then move on, right? It's a chapter of one's life that one has to just accept and take in, take it all in. And then move forward from there. And, I mean, it's the same about victories, right? You, you run a victorious campaign, you do an analysis, what went well, what didn't went well, what could have gotten better. But, but that, I think, makes you a better organizer, better candidate, right? Better elected official. I think I'm better because of those defeats, um, and those experiences.
Winning feels good.
Oh, yes. It feels great.
And then we, we've won all the A D M's.
Oh, yeah. And, and we won the A D M's, so, but, uh, that's more important.
Yeah, no, definitely. I think, I think it's important to understand, I think it's important to lose too. Cause it's like, it brings you back to earth kinda deal. Like winning, 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 that's awesome. But I think, I forgot who said it, somebody said it, somebody famous, I'm sure. Like, yeah, when you're winning, you don't learn anything when you win. You learn when you lose.
They say, I, I remember my sociology teacher in, at SDSU. Shout out to SDSU, by the way. Yeah, and, uh, but he said, uh, uh, failure is a better teacher than success.
There you go.
And, um, and that, I think that's true. Um, you know, you win all the time, you know, it's, you're not, you're not, there's the, the feedback that you get when you lose is, is, is different.
Well, yeah, you came back stronger. And you killed it when you won.
Yeah, God, God is good, bro.
Everybody's winning.
Ricardo, come out here, just say hi real quick, come on.
Audio engineer, video engineer, you name it. He's making Ricar, he's making, he's making Jose look pretty.
It's nothing wrong with that.
We'll edit that out.
That's okay, that's okay.
Wait, on, on the losing part, one last thing, uh, that I thought about right now, is being willing to take risks. Like when, when Juan, you know, mentioned to me about a campaign he was working on, um, I don't know if it's public, so I'm not gonna mention the name of the company. Huge company. And I'm like, Juan, are you batshit crazy? That's a huge undertaking for one organizer. And he said, gotta give it a shot, right? And, and win or lose a campaign, there's stuff that you're gonna learn along the way, but there's that other component of the individual willing to take risks, right? Yeah, you know, you run a campaign, uh, six months out and, and it's very competitive, there's a chance you're not gonna win. It's up to the individual whether or not they feel like they're gonna take that risk or not, right? Same thing on policy, right? You have legislators that are gonna push for first pick, you know, um, uh, universal healthcare right here in California. It's the, that's not a guaranteed victory, but it's up to the individual to say, we're going for it a hundred percent and, and we'll see if we win or not. But, uh, gotta take that, gotta be willing to take the risk.
Or what is it for, if we don't take risks? That's it. It's not like we're taking risks to sell a cell phone or to sell a car. We're taking risks to pass something or to help people. So it's to better society as a whole.
You're doing the right thing, you know, you do, uh, you know, you, you know, sometimes doing the right thing is difficult. And you have to, uh, you know, it's easy to go with the flow, but when, um, you know, you do something that, uh. Uh, you know, not everyone agrees with it, you get some pushback. Um, I think Martin Luther King said, uh, you know, when you, when you do something, uh, you know, one plus God is a majority. Um, and if you believe what you're doing is right, you know, um, that's all you need to do. And if you, if you step away from doing something that's right, um, you know, you kinda die a little, I think, you know, you. You know, you might be forty-seven as, you know, I happen to be, but you know, you could live to your ninety, but you'll be just as dead. At ninety, if you don't, if you don't, you know, move forward and, and, and live. I mean, living is, is, is taking risks. Tomorrow's promised to no man.
That's right. And, okay, speaking of living, we're troublemakers. So we're troublemakers in labor, but you're the troublemaker down there. Yeah, you're, you're always rattling feathers and stuff and. Like, how do you, why do you do that? As in like, we do it in labor. That's why maybe we're drawn to you and we're like friends and stuff like that, cause I appreciate you being that, there and that. And that's fear and the politics side of things, but a lot of people won't do that.
I mean, I, I think, um, you know, in my experience, li- life is inherently unfair. And in a country, in a state, um, in regions that have so much wealth, um, and so much opportunity. Those opportunities should extend to everybody. And I think it's inherently unfair for somebody to grow up in National City. And have, you know, neighborhoods that we don't feel proud of, that don't have the opportunity for ownership. Where parents have to move in and out of the city, left and right, um, where city workers are not treated with dignity and respect. Those issues need to be addressed. So, I mean, I think the, um, uh, strength of the community. And the issues that the community is living through are what inspire me and motivate me to change the systems of the community that I'm serving. And making sure that it's better. So, I mean, I guess it is causing trouble, cause we're changing something, but the alternative is doing nothing. And, and that's not worth living for. I mean, what are, what are you, what are you doing then?
It's no fun.
You gotta make sure things work for your people, otherwise, what are we doing?
Exactly.
Definitely. Any last words, Jose? It was awesome. You came on. We've been calling you for the past year to have you on, but you've been ignoring our calls.
I haven't been hiking with you guys in a while.
I was living in Imperial Valley for the strike. And, um, you know, I've been partnering a lot with Juan. I just wake up and, you know, but, you know, we do our best, we're flawed men.
And there's a, there's a time change. That's a wrench, for sure.
And then, and then it rains and then it's cold. And weather, but any last words, Jose?
Um, I don't know about last words, other than, uh, maybe a little more about what we're working on in National City. We need to make sure that we expand homeownership. Unacceptable that all we're building ha- have been luxury apartments over the last decade and that continuing. Unacceptable. So we're pushing a policy so that we, um, city-owned property, as we sell it to develop. We wanna make sure that the, um, developers that want to build units that are for sale, actually get those bids. So that we have hundreds of new units in the city that are for sale, condos, townhouses, right? Um, if you go on Zillow right now, there's less than thirty units for sale in all of National City. That's how competitive the market is. The cheapest ones go for the low three hundreds and those are one-bedroom condos. Yeah, so we need to make sure that we develop more of those units so that everyday people can buy. Um, cause what they're paying for rent now is what they would pay to own. Right? So, so we're changing that policy to make sure that we prioritize homeownership. Um, so that, so that's one thing that I'm really proud of and we're pushing forward. Uh, the other thing is a proposition that we gathered enough signatures for last year. This proposition's gonna be on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-four. It is for funding, um, paving of the alleys, streets, sidewalks. Uh, and parks. So, um, uh, we have about fifteen to twenty percent of the alleys in National City that are still dirt alleys. Unacceptable. Um, we need hundreds of streetlights around the city, cause it's really dark in some neighborhoods. Unacceptable. We have, um, uh, some places that still don't have sidewalks, unacceptable, right? So we need to make sure that we invest in our neighborhoods again, so this proposition is gonna allow us to do that. Uh, so that's gonna be on the November twenty twenty-four ballot. Um, and I'm up for reelection that year as well.
Oh, wow.
A little help from the labor movement also, huh?
There you go, that's awesome. Okay, cool. Well, there you go. There you have it, Chris.
All right, well, yeah. This is, uh, your union brother. Have a good one. I'll see you when I see you and then, uh.
Organizing monster and Jose and we'll call it a day. All right.
Peace out.
Peace out.